If I could ask everyone to silence their cell phones, please. Come on, let me make sure I did this.
Pittsburgh is better for me.
It's embarrassing when I don't do my own. And shall we rise for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. At least the sun's shining, getting warmer. We've already sat, we have minutes of our meeting held on March 14th, gentlemen. Could I have a motion to accept those?
I'll make it.
And I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. There you go, sunny. Okay. The first thing this morning that was going over. We have a public hearing to accept a grant in the amount of $357,000. Three hundred and fifty-seven, three hundred and seventy-six point eight six dollars. Got to get the eighty-six cents in. This is, this is from the, is it COSAP or is COSAP program? And this was through the State of New Hampshire Department of Justice. The purpose of this grant is to fund a drug prevention enforcement and treatment officer for a three-year period beginning in 2022. I will open this public hea- oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
Oh, okay. I heard that.
I was just gonna break it down for you.
Oh, okay. I will open this public hearing for anybody from the public that wants to speak on it.
So if I could, I would just give the general breakdown of the information. So Lieutenant Woodlander and Chief Lindaski had worked together on this project. And we have this, the grant covers both salaries or salary for three years for the position, all of the fringe benefits for the position for three years, as well as a cruiser for three years, and any of the equipment necessary, the laptop and so forth that needs to go into the cruiser, and all of that is included in the grant. We've reached out to Franklin Savings Bank and working with them on the other two cruisers that we were purchasing. We've been able to include this cruiser in that process as well.
So it's a lease. We're going to lease like, as we do the others.
So it will be a lease, it will be paid off in three years. So when the grant is, is complete, the cruiser will be paid off. Evan and I have worked together on the salary breakdown and have been able to fit that into our schedule, along with all of the other fringe benefits and so forth that are anticipated to go with it. The first payment on the cruiser is not due until July, even though we'd be taking possession of it a bit sooner. You have in front of you this morning the documents that need to be signed that will go to governor and council, and you would be authorized, we would ask that any motion that you hold at the end of the meeting would include you as the authorized signator on that grant paperwork.
Okay, all right.
And I think Mark certainly, the chief, can certainly fill in any of the, the other voids that there may be.
Oh, it's very, it's pretty straightforward. It's what we talked about earlier, all the transport, one of our programs, the position. It mirrors the program in Laconia PD has been, been working on. Eric Adams has been put in place to be the point man for this program. The grant came out of the attorney general's office, and as Gina mentioned, that paperwork that you have, we need to get back to them so at their meeting they can sign that.
Sure.
And then move forward. Right now, we haven't hired anyone to backfill, hired anyone to backfill yet. We need to make sure we're moving in the right direction.
Of course.
And then once we, once that happens, then we will.
So what is the salary that, that this man is going to get that we hire?
Personally.
I mean, it was included into this, but I want to know what his salary is going to be, his salary.
Well, that salary is completely paid by the grant.
Absolutely. But I'd like to know, because, you know, after three years, you know, then what are we going to do? We're going to keep him on and then add it into our budget for the year, or?
Well, you're not bound by, you're not bound by the money that's being paid in the grant on the hire back. Because once that grant expires, generally on a grant like that, there's a rollover of a second year. So theoretically, it should go six years and then be reassessed.
So the, I think what he's asking is, so the person that is hired for this position, if you have no other openings, correct, when the three years is up, do we have to, are we forced to retain that person? Is that kind of, that's, yeah.
No, that's not true.
And that's not true.
Once, if we're at full staff and the grant expires in three years, and we don't have an opening.
Right.
That person moves on. So that's, that's the, I guess that's the risk that the individual that wants to take that grant position.
Takes.
That's the risk they run. If it goes on for three more years, and they have a six-year, a six-year gig, generally that person would probably retire at that point anyway, or move on to another department, or come back into ours if we had that position. But we're not obligated at that point either to follow the salary range of what that position was paying. So they would just be re, you know, reintroduced back into the PD at a cer- at a rate suitable to where they would be, not maybe where they are.
So in other words, this person in three years, if the grant wasn't renewed, was making, let's just, I'm just shooting a number, a hundred thousand.
Right.
But that dried up and went away, and that person chose to go into a patrolman positions for compensation.
Sure.
And that was only at ninety thousand. That person understands that they would be taking a decrease, basically.
Absolutely. No, no question about it.
Yep. All right.
Yeah, we have no obligations. We have to stay within the confines of the yearly monies based on the three-year program. And as long as we're inside, inside those, those parameters, everything works out fine. And again, it's, it's completely grant-related, so the person that's going into that position really takes a risk. Because in three years, they could, you know.
Be without a job.
You could turn in with a new president or something, or the government takes a different spin, and says, no, we're not going to fund that any longer.
Sure.
And there you are. You're, you're all done. The cruiser would be, would roll back to us. We would own.
Well, that's what I was going to ask you, what's going to happen about the cruiser?
The computer, we will own the computer. We don't have to own the person. But the tangible stuff, we, we stay with them. So it's a risky, it's a risky, it's a risky move for someone that's in a secure position to, to go out and take that job.
Unless that person is figuring in three years, they're going to retire anyways.
Yeah.
You know, and that could be.
Or if it was filled by someone who already is retired.
Or it could be, sure.
Who was doing it as, as a part-time.
Yeah.
Under, under the auspices of that, that position.
Got it.
And that can, and it could happen now. It didn't, it didn't need to be a full-time person. It could be a part-time person.
Yeah, all right.
You think you'll have any trouble for filling this spot? Do you have anybody that's?
I have somebody in mind.
Any, you have somebody in mind?
I do. And it's a tough, it's, it's a tough game out here right now.
Oh, I bet it is.
Real tough. We just heard something that came out of, I haven't looked into it yet, but Nashua has taken a step with their new, new negotiation process, and if it's, if what I heard is true, we're done.
Yeah, I saw that.
They're going to suck everybody up because the money is just incredible.
Well, in the last couple of weeks, the, the sign-on bonuses and some of these alone, I mean, we can't compete with that.
You can't.
There's no way we can compete with that.
So we're going to be in a position where bringing certified people here will be almost.
Impossible.
Impossible. So we'll be hiring, we'll be hiring new people, training them.
Training them, yeah.
Holding them to a contract, a three-year contract that we have, and then hoping they stay. You know, providing them, you know, a good enough environment, they like the area, and the.
Well, and that's only unless one of these, like Nashwood doesn't buy up the contract.
Buy up their contracts.
I mean, they signed a contract, and if someone comes in and buys it out.
And that's already happened.
Yeah.
You know, they've, they've got certified people out there in other towns and blocks contracts up.
Yep.
But we do have one in the process right now that is certified. Once we get to that, that point where I can bring that information forward to you or what, but at least out of the three positions we had, the two that we have now, we're replacing at least with a certified.
Yeah. I think it's going to be an ongoing battle.
I don't think we're going to be as fortunate for the, for the next position.
Yeah.
I think we're going to be training somebody.
Yeah.
And it's just, it's just where we're at, and it, there's just nothing we can do.
No.
We can't afford to go out and compete with some of these agencies that just have bottomless bits of money.
Any other, kind of got off track a little bit, Ron, yes?
Ron Mitchell. How's this program organized, prevention? What's this, what's this office of being? How's, how's he operating the town?
So what, what the position does is if we have a drug issue, if there's an overdose, if there's people that we find in possession, this officer interacts with them. And it opens up a whole avenue to treat, treatments, uh, resources. So instead of the enforcement side, which we only can, we only offer now, this is going to provide a treatment program, opportunities. There's going to be opportunities to get it to certain centers that maybe they weren't aware of, or connect them with people that they weren't aware of, and try to get them to take a different route, get away from those, as opposed to staying out. It's something that we've never been able to do here, but now we will.
Now, is this person also going to be able to go into the schools and do programs or whatever?
Absolutely.
I mean, are we going to be able to, you know, ed, do some education with, in the schools to help?
Yes, this, this position is completely community interacting.
Okay, all right.
So even, even a person that knows that they have a child that might be.
Mm-hmm.
Into it.
Yeah.
They can contact this person, and connections can be made, and then help can be there. They can help the families with ideas on where they can send them.
Mm-hmm.
What opportunities around the air for treatments.
Help to make those connections.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So that's what the whole program is designed for, for the three years, is to, is to have that aside that we don't have. Right now, we only have an enforcement side.
Right.
Well, you know that enforcement isn't the answer to everything, so now we'll be able to offer that community outreach, which we never could.
Yeah.
So it's a good deal, and it's costing us zero.
And I would imagine, I'm only thinking, that, that this person will have more availability to more information and more help as far as where to send people with certain issues or whatever.
Absolutely. They'll be, they'll be tightly involved in all the areas and people, and be able to basically develop their own network.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that helps a lot.
Mm-hmm.
You can cut through some red tape, you can get through areas.
That you, you, that a police officer doesn't, as you say.
We have no idea.
Right.
You know, I mean, we're so in-depth with calls now, we don't have time to, to look at the outreach side things. But this gives that person that opportunity.
Yes, Ron.
Well, I've, I've dealt with a child that had problems. The biggest thing that I saw was treatment centers. And they're expensive for people that don't have means to be able to put them in these programs. If this officer decides that, well, I'm going to send them to a, a treatment program, but if they don't have the money, how, how much of these federal funds is going for treatment? I know out in Laconia, they, they've opened up some doors like down on Court Street for, for alcohol, I know that the old Weeks is a real estate place. But that seems to be the problem that I see is, is that, and I, and I look at your arrest reports in the, in the paper, and eighty-five percent of them are all drug-related, you know, possession or whatever. So if you stop a person and they've got fentanyl, so you say, well, we're going to, we're not going to rush you for this, but we've got an officer that's going to try to steer you in the right direction, so to speak. So, I mean, that makes a constant thing that this officer has to have one, call him up, say, what are you, how are you doing this week, and so on and so forth. It seems like it's enough a lot for one person.
It is a lot. They do work with the courts. People that are found in possession, like, like you were indicating, they, they are arrested. It's what happens after the arrest. There's a lot that can happen after the arrest, as far as the, the treatment, the, the interactions go with, you know, with help or agencies that are out there. I personally don't know that, that avenues, those avenues, because I don't deal with those avenues. I deal with the enforcement side and keeping, keeping our guys focused on, on what their jobs are. This is going to give us an opportunity we never had before. And there's areas out there that we probably never heard of, that they're going to be able to get to. You know, families that do have insurance, some insurances will pay for some of this, some doesn't, you know, some don't.
I think though, there's been a, there's a, there's, I was just going to say, I think in the last few years, there's been far more federal money available to be able to help that, and I think COVID even brought that more to the forefront. I mean, I guess we won't know unless we try. I think it's, it's.
But you gotta know how to access that money.
Right.
We're not in that job.
You're not, that's not your, right.
No, no.
You don't have that time.
We don't have that kind of time to look at this.
And you're right, Ron. One person might not be enough.
Well, you, you know.
But again, we won't know unless we try, I guess.
It's a great opportunity for the town to have somebody that can be that liaison.
Yeah.
That we've never had before.
Before.
So we're offering something we've never had. It's a trial. The AG's office obviously feels that the program Laconia has worthwhile, and they spearheaded off of that. And that's what this is modeled after.
And I'm hoping this person will have the connection with Laconia to be able to pick their brains, so to speak.
Oh, we already do.
Oh, okay, and no.
We already do.
All right.
They're, they're very close to each other.
Good, good.
I'm not against the program.
No, no.
I think it's, but, you know.
I understand.
With the state of New Hampshire, we're losing over four hundred young people every year to overdoses. And that starts to happen after a while, then you wonder why you don't have any labor force when you're losing all this. We got.
And those are the ones you know about.
That's what you don't know.
And it's sad that these kids don't see any hope in the future of the way things are going, in my opinion, the way things are going. You know, because all you hear is negative stuff. And I think the, this, disillusioned though, but what the future is, but anything we can do is, is fine. I'm not, I'm not against the program at all.
No, no.
And I think it's well overdue, just.
And, and I think it's, I think it's worthwhile enough where, I think it's going to have the benefit to the town.
I know Gona has to deal with, she has a lot of things that she has to deal with that's related to this stuff too, so.
And she'll have interaction with that person as well. Yeah. And Mark?
It'd be nice to pass off, to be honest with you.
Turn the sofa.
Yeah, turn it over.
Yeah. I'm just kind of curious, is there any, any statistics on the effectiveness of this type of a, you know, program that I'm sure is going to have a different level of effectiveness in a national or in Manchester versus a Belmont, you know, or, you know, or, or Canterbury or something like that? I just didn't know if there's any, any statistics out that.
There may be, Mark, but I don't have them.
Okay.
I haven't seen them. I just know that Laconia's had success with their program. Obviously, there's failures with, with, when you deal with drug addiction and stuff. If you look at the national standard, the value is between one and one and a half percent of success. But even that's its success.
Yeah.
And if you have something that you can offer, at least we have someone that can interact on a different level. They're not interacting as a police officer, they're interacting more as a social officer, offering you help.
Yeah, and I, I don't ask that question.
Yeah, and helping you walk that, you know, walk that path with them. But I can get you some numbers if you want. I can find out how successful it was, because I'm sure they had to present those numbers or some similar numbers to get the federal, federal monies.
Yeah, I mean, I'm always curious about, you know, stuff like that, and I, and I understand that it, it's completely unrealistic to think that it's going to have, you know, a, a high rate, you know, of success.
Right.
You know, based on, you know, demographics and, and just the inherent, you know, issues with, you know, with, you know, substance use. But yeah, I'm always curious.
Sure, let's see if I can dig some off of it.
Well, I'll, I'll give the other half of this to the chief, is that the act of this officer is an access point. That's what chief Woodhouse was trying to say. Right now, they have nowhere, nowhere to go. This person has the access point. And funding, a lot of these places now are federally funded for this, so they're not hanging out of pocket, so we can actually get them into these places, et cetera. Their world goes around than it used to. The problem is, my guys, your guys are the same way, is we don't know who these are. Just also give that the access for these people to be able to get into there. Now, what they do when they're in there, we've already gotten, gotten into there. But now, say they make a mistake, then this officer now engages them again, and hopefully they'll get them back in. That's just the whole point. We're not going to correct it. Well, hoping to correct it, but this is a point where there's a contact, like, one of our guys will call them and say, hey, we got this incident, blah, 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 and they make a contact, and they'll get them in, and they'll, they follow this person into the path of trying to get them. That's what I understood this.
That's exactly what it is.
Is this person just, is this person going to be in uniform, or is it?
No.
No, okay.
Plainclothes.
Okay, that's.
Plainclothes, plain wrapped car.
Okay. So the cruiser, the cruiser isn't a marked cruiser, it's a, like an unmarked cruiser.
It's just, it's just a car.
It's a car.
A black SUV.
Yeah, okay, all right. Yeah?
And just as a point of information, I don't believe that it's solely drugs. I believe it's drug and alcohol.
There's alcohol.
Alcohol is.
Alcohol is a component to it.
I mean, it has been, and it'll continue to be. So it's a benefit, not only for drugs, but also.
For alcohol.
Alcohol, I mean, for individuals that.
Well, you kind of forget about the alcohol when you've had so much.
Drugs, I know.
You know, emphasis on fentanyl.
Which is huge.
Yeah. And unfortunately, they're usually mixed. One goes with the other.
Cross over.
Right, yeah. Are you getting them for DWR, are you getting them, well, for, for drug use, or are you getting them for alcohol use? It kind of goes.
And it is a point of information. Eric Adams with the city of Laconia has done amazing things.
Yeah.
I mean, he really has. And so this is a huge asset, of course, to really be able to grab a hold of, and have somebody help facilitate some of the, you know, the, yours.
Well, just pay, just getting the info helping, becau- getting the information, it just makes this person's job that much easier because they've already experienced it and done the, done the homework.
And there's a lot of federal dollars that have come into the state, and it's continued to come into the state because they're trying to combat this in a bunch of different ways, so.
Awesome.
And that's how actually this all became.
That's all, right.
Awesome, good.
They go to the same AA meetings as that alcohol.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
All right, okay.
I see a lot of people don't know that, but it's, it's all inclusive.
All the same.
Well, it's both. I mean, there's AA as well, and there's AA. And they cross over, but.
Yeah, all right. Any other questions? No, all right. So we need a motion to.
Accept the grant, yes, and to designate the chairman of the board as the signator for the grant documents, please.
I'll make that motion to accept the grant, and I have the chairman sign for the grant.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I'll sign that, do I, I can sign that afterwards?
You can, and initial.
All these pages?
Forty pages.
Yeah, all right. And obviously, I didn't close, and I, and I, and I am remiss about re-closing to the public for this hearing. All right, on to the next item.
Yes, so this morning, we have attorney Brendan O'Donnell with us. He is with DTC Lawyers, and he is going to present to you and discuss with you a proposed franchise agreement with Comcast, which we are very excited about.
Brendan, would you like to come front and center? I'm sure there's a lot of people that would like to hear what you have to say this morning.
So I'll start, someone at the beginning, and then if, at any point, you know, duplicating too much, whatever, just let me know when I can see that.
All right.
But just by way of background, the existing cable television franchise the town has was signed in 2014, and that's with MetroCast, which is now.
Now Breeze, Breeze Line.
Which is now.
Breeze Line, yeah, yeah.
So I'll call them Breeze Line to, to simplify it, but the way federal and state laws set up, they were, originally, they anticipated there being a lot more competition, which is why towns generally don't have a lot of authority to regulate cable television, what's finally happening, you know, twenty, thirty years later. But as a result, the way the regulations are set up, the town can't enter into a new competitive agreement that is more favorable or less burdensome than the existing agreement. Basically, if the town gets a proposal, it has to be competitively controlled. And so the town received a proposal from Comcast to construct a competitive cable television franchise. The first thing that we did was we reviewed the existing agreement with the Comcast proposal side by side in extreme detail to make sure that, are there differences, what are the differences? We came back to Comcast with some provisions to make them more comparable, and just overall to make sure that we're not going to expose the town to Breeze Line being able to come back and say, hey, the Comcast agreement's better, you now need to make concessions to us on the existing agreement.
Okay.
So the sticking point on the two agreements, and they're sort of, one is, involves the institutional network, which is called the INET, which is sort of a dark fiber system that the school district uses, and it can communicate directly, it's on it. So it's not going through the internet, it's going directly between those buildings. The Comcast proposal doesn't include INET for the, I mean, for obvious reasons, the town doesn't need a second INET. It already has one, and they're somewhat expensive to build in the first instance. And so Comcast, instead of providing INET, they've offered what they call the technology fund, so it'll be a grant of two thousand five hundred per year to the town over a ten-year term for a total of twenty-five thousand. The second sort of big background piece is that in 2019, two, three years ago now, the Federal Communications Commission redefined what constitutes a franchise fee. And so as, you know, from the existing agreement with Breeze Line, the town gets a franchise fee payment of three percent of gross annual revenues every year, so you're getting that money. It's a fee that's passed on to subscribers, but Breeze Line pays that money to the town. Towns historically received a number of other benefits from the cable franchise, like free drops to municipal buildings, free basic cable service, the ongoing costs associated with maintaining INETS, the ongoing costs associated with maintaining public educational government head access channels. The SEC said that all of those sort of free in-kind services that the town received, well, they actually count as franchise fees, subject to the five percent cap. So the result is that if only one cable operator is providing INET maintenance costs, and it's a greater burden to provide those, and they count as franchise fees, it, Breeze Line could come back and say, Comcast doesn't have to provide this, this is what our cost is, you have to either lower the franchise fee, or us, in some other way, make us whole.
And if I could just.
Yep.
Chime in just quickly for them, so that they understand.
The tech geeks that are not.
We actually had a meeting last week via Zoom, myself, attorney O'Donnell, attorney Miller, Deb Thompson, the business administrator with the school district, and Jason Hills, who is the technology coordinator for the school district, to talk about the INET, where the school district, school district is currently, are they paying for that INET? They aren't currently receiving a fee. We had quite a lengthy discussion about the benefits of the Comcast franchise agreement to the residents within the community versus the INET situation. I think Jason had an excellent handle on what his intent was going forward, as far as actually going out and looking for proposals for INET services, or a new INET line, I guess, was really.
Yeah, there's some different options.
Different options for them, and they are going to start that process in the fall, because they are very much aware that the current contract with Breeze Line could have been charging them for this INET service. They haven't, they haven't been under that new law, and the position that Breeze Line has taken in Laconia and Guilford was that they were just going to wait and look at it when the current agreement's expired, so.
Yeah, so, take it back a bit. In Laconia and Guilford, they received Comcast competitive proposals, and everything looked like they were, you know, even if Comcast had given an estimate of this is what, you know, we think is sort of equal benefit and burden to the INET provision that those towns had. And Atlantic came back and said, we don't see them as equivalent, and they were demanding that those towns pay something in the range of a thousand-plus dollars per month for the INET service they were receiving. Now, we use that number because it's sort of the first number we've gotten from a cable franchise. They have all the information about what their stuff costs, they don't always share that.
Share that, yeah.
Historically, provided this for free. One change did happen, is that after the SEC issued that order, large northern municipalities to the west and the northwest sued over that order, and ultimately, what came out is that the INET service fees count as franchise fees, but only to the marginal cost of the cable provider, meaning they can't charge you the retail cost of those services, you're only counting how much it, it costs them. As of right now, no one has been willing to give us that information, and maybe they never are, because, you know, it might shed light on how much money they actually make off of all the residents of these communities, and what their margins actually are. But, the point is that Breeze Line could, at any point, regardless of the Comcast agreement, they could say, we want these INET maintenance costs to count as franchise fees, and we're either going to pass them on to subscribers, or we're going to take them out of the franchise fees you collect. So that could happen regardless of the Comcast proposal. So, what we wanted to have a conversation with you about is, you know, there's a few options, there's risks and benefits of each, but ultimately, we want an outcome where Comcast still comes into the town, because that gives you a second cable television operator, that's more competition, which hopefully has an impact on price and service, and as you know, there have been a number of complaints in the Lakes Region regarding existing service quality. Well, this would be a new state-of-the-art fiber system from Comcast, so you have a more reliable system and more competition between the two. The other piece is, even though the town can't regulate it, the town isn't allowed to regulate provision of internet services, but as a practical matter, if Comcast builds out a cable television system, you get another internet provider, so there's more competition there, which, again, is a major benefit for all of the people in this community.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay, that's a, that's a, now, I assume, and this, I'm only assuming this, you have a line that comes up 106 at this point, correct? Where does, where does your cable come from at this point?
So, I represent the town, I don't represent the cable.
Right, oh, okay.
Right, he's with, he's with DTC attorneys. He's our representative.
That was my next question, who do you work for?
Yeah. He works for you.
You're talking to a guy with a flip phone, he's like, go easy.
He works for you, I apologize.
All right.
Negotiate against.
Correct.
Breeze Line in the renewal, and this separate matter.
Okay, so I'm still going to ask this question, because we got the substation up here on.
Their new, their new building is at the base of, or at Plummer Hill, correct?
And it was my understanding that they brought the cable up 106 to that building, but we don't know that.
I don't know that, we have been after them.
That is correct.
We have been after them for several, for the past two, almost three years now, to consider giving us a franchise. They weren't willing to expand.
Right.
And then this spring, they reached out and said, we're ready, we're very interested.
The only place they expanded in Belmont was at Briocrest.
And I'm not even certain if they, if they actually did finalize that.
Well, that's my understanding, they did. And I assume, Breeze Line, Breeze Line has their own line on the poles, so now Comcast has to come with their lines on the poles. So this is nothing that just comes out of the dock.
No, so, once, if the town grants that franchise.
Sure.
Then Comcast has the right to basically contact Consolidated PSN H4.
Whoever owns the poles, yeah.
To get a pole license agreement, and then they'll start attaching their cable to those lines.
Yep, all right. So I guess you're here to ask us if we're willing to.
So, basically, I, you know, I'm just gonna, if I can, I'm gonna walk through sort of the, the benefits versus risks associated with the INET and Comcast proposal. I'll explain what steps we've taken to try to strengthen the town's position, should there be pushback from Breeze Line. And then ultimately, if, if, you know, you're okay with that comparative burden, we'd ask you to schedule a public hearing, at least two weeks out, so it'd be.
Our next meeting.
Twenty, yeah.
With actually the twenty-fifth.
Exactly, two weeks, because we've won it, longer than two weeks, so.
I don't, I mean, we can, obviously, we'll go over the benefits and not, but, but I personally, with the amount of stuff I see off and on on Facebook, and the issues that people have, I think we're foolish not to come to some sort of an agreement, only because, I mean, we've had this discussion when we were dealing with Convenient MD, that obviously, we need a second cable provider. There's no ifs, ands, and ors, and let them fight it out, as far as I'm concerned.
That's certainly our recommendation, and we've also seen, Breeze Line was putting in competitive proposals towards the Seacoast, and they actually withdrew a couple of those, because they saw Consolidated stringing up fiber, and they didn't want to be the third player in the town. So this is, Consolidated's just coming for the internet side, but there may not be an option in the future where it makes business, and Comcast wants to come, so it's, I think it's important to get that competition for the residents.
Okay, let's, let's hear the pros and cons, because, I mean, and I guess we just go for it.
So, I mean, the first point is that ultimately, Breeze Line can come, come back to the town and say, we don't have to provide INET services for free anyway, because there's a change in federal law. So, knowing that they can do that anyway, you shouldn't let it, I think, hold them back too much.
Sure.
What we have done with Comcast, and I got some information, but I didn't like it enough, and I'm pushing back for better information, was we wanted some letter, or estimate, or document showing what they would charge for that dark fiber INET-type service, so that we have information from the person who wouldn't be coming back fighting us, that we could use as. Well, you're actually, your estimate's very high. Anecdotally, Comcast suggested that that figure that was quoted to Guilford, like it was, seemed high. The second piece of that is that ultimately, because of the change where it now needs to be marginal cost, not retail cost, there is a chance that Breeze Line does not come back, because they are unwilling to tell you exactly what their marginal cost is. But even if they come back, the town's response in the first instance would be, you need to show us the marginal cost, not the retail cost, for purposes of determining whether or not we need to make changes to franchise fees. If we get something from Comcast that indicates that twenty-five hundred annual amount really wouldn't cover it, then we could potentially push back some on that, well, clean, you know, not as much, we don't want to push away.
Right, we don't want to, right.
But, it would give the town a better understanding of, of sort of the risk. But, the worst-case scenario, the, the retail figure that was quoted, Guilford, comes out to about twelve thousand, fifteen thousand a year, for what we believe to be about twice as long of the INET. I think the figure that the school district gave us.
That Jason gave us, yeah, I think it was something like that, yeah.
Two, maybe not five. So, the town also gets about fifty-five thousand in franchise fees from just Breeze Line right now, in three percent. So it's, this would be a school district cost, but it's not such a high cost that would be, you know, insurmountable versus the benefit to the entire town of getting that competitive service. So, our recommendation would be to go forward with the revised headline. I did note in my letter, we made a number of changes to improved pieces where Comcast came in not as strong as the existing MetroCast treatments, we brought it up in a number of areas. But otherwise, they're functionally the same agreement, and the same requirements regarding paying franchise fees, repairing and restoring roadways, providing public access channels, and, and funding insurance, all of those other requirements.
Should we ask what the superintendent of schools thinks?
I was wondering that.
Not my level.
See, now I don't feel so bad, okay?
I have a simple understanding, basically, the school district wouldn't be part of the town agreement, therefore, the school district has to build out their own, their own system, which is going to be a significant cost.
Yeah.
So, ultimately, if Atlantic comes back, and they said, you know, here's the demand, it would be, the school district would have the choice of either.
Stay with what you have.
Either push back or pay whatever this amount is, or they explore some of those other options that they talked about, including funding other service providers, building any line.
And there was a, a grant option, if I remember correctly, that they, that the school district works with, it's called E.
E-Rate.
E-Rate, which is.
Bid four, so.
Correct.
We're currently in the process of exploring our own options.
Yeah.
Whether it's expensive.
Yeah. Step one is this, step two is, we don't know whether Breeze Line actually comes back and makes that demand.
Sure.
But they could, and they are, well, might in 2024, at the very least, when the renewal is up. And if they do, you know, those are the options that the school is already considering, is my understanding.
And we're currently only receiving a three percent franchise fee from Breeze Line at this point, we can go up to five percent. I think if the, if Breeze Line comes back and says to the district they're going to start charging them a monthly fee, as we, as Brendan indicated, with Guilford, they had said it was going to be about twelve thousand to fifteen thousand dollars a year. Their, their length of line is longer than what our current district's is, so it would be somewhere, well, we're guessing, six to seven thousand dollars a year, in what would be your monthly subscription fee for having that line. I mean, it is something that we could certainly look at covering if we increased our franchise fee by one percent or something like that going forward in the future, I mean, because we can go up to five percent.
So basically, what, what would happen is, I, as a homeowner, would have the choice of one versus the other, pure and simple. Both lines are going to go by my house, I can choose which one I want.
Yes.
Okay.
And I mean, the, the thing to remember is, is that, which I think is a huge benefit, is the Comcast line is going to be new line, which is going to make, I think, just a much greater difference in reliability. You know, as far as, I mean, Breeze Line's equipment is old, or older.
And it also, you know, it may be the emphasis that, that finally gets Breeze Line to operate some of those.
Some of those, of course.
Maybe you can see a play on prices, yes, but.
I mean, I know, I just, you never know what it's going to be when you open your bill once a month. It seems to keep going up, I go, I don't think I paid this much last month. I mean, it's, I'm sure that there's a rhyme or reason, but it, and then, then you go on Facebook, and everybody's complaining about their service.
And the town itself is not really getting any free service at this point, from the town's perspective.
Right.
We get a basic cable drop in the buildings, for those that have just basic cable TV, but all of our internet services, the, are, we are paying a monthly fee for, some as much as two hundred dollars a month, depending upon the speed of the internet that they need in order to run their, the equipment and so forth that they have within their buildings. So, they're not giving us, you know, anything.
We're not getting a, we're not getting a good deal service fee.
I, I will say, the school district is, is definitely, you know, they have been getting the INET service at no, you know, no monthly fee for that. You know, so that would potentially be a change, but I think it was going to be a change, no matter what, in our new franchise agreement, potentially with Breeze Line.
So with those other things, we pushed back a number of times. Ultimately, they said that they would take it up at the next removal, and they had some unique circumstances, but at, at least for those towns, Breeze Line pushed it off. But, you know, there, there is that chance, we think it's pretty high that at some point, Breeze Line comes back. We're using that Guilford figure as sort of a high investment, because it's retail and not marginal cost. It's, for a larger system, and it's not subtracting the twenty-five hundred yearly amount that you would get from Comcast, so you'd also reduce it from there, to see the difference.
And we would have, we could certainly, potentially, work out some arrangement with Breeze Line, so that if, in fact, that credit was somehow, we could then transfer it to the school district, so that they were using, having that in some manner to offset costs.
Once the, the town gets the franchise fees, the town can, you know, tell the boards.
Pretty much, yeah.
Have this most of them, or build them into their budget.
Yeah.
And move it along.
Yeah, I, I'm fine, I'm fine with it, I mean, I think, we have no, I don't think it's a no-brainer. I think we have to keep moving forward with it, that's for sure.
But we'll prepare for the board for that hearing, which could be.
Two weeks.
Either the twenty-fifth or May second. Would be a script that you can follow, that basically, just, it allows you to recite the required information you're supposed to look at under the, you know, under Cable Statute.
Okay.
And then, you just walk through that, and at that time, there's a public hearing.
People can be here and speak.
Everyone can hear and speak in favor.
Yeah, against whatever.
Companies will be notified, so if they want to come speak, they can.
Okay.
And then, or, at that time, makes, takes a vote, decides whether or not to approve the competitive franchise.
All right, okay.
Brendan, you'll send me the notifications that need to go out, or will you be mailing them?
Yeah, I have a draft notice, but I'll send it to you.
Okay, and we, we then send it, okay, all right.
So I can pretty quick, I can get that done.
Great, okay, excellent, so we would schedule that then for the twenty-fifth? Is there any requirement under their public hearing guidelines that require it to be daytime, nighttime?
No, so this is, so the, the two weeks just comes from the general statute that applies to Board of Selectmen meetings.
Okay.
So it's, it's at the board's discretion, there's not a specific date in the, the cable act.
All right, and we would post this also in the newspaper?
You know, however you normally would.
Okay, all right, okay, so there's no requirement, but we certainly could, we would certainly want to do that and get it out.
It's always better to have a little notice, that's what you typically do.
Yeah, okay, all right, we can do that.
Yeah, all right, good, all right, all right. Awesome, thank you very much.
Thanks, Brendan.
All right. I think a lot of people will be very pleased to hear that.
I think it's very exciting, I think it's, you know, we've, we've certainly been after them and asking them when they initially came to us about the building. We said, hey, you know, what about us? And they were like, oof, sorry, but, so I think it's, it's good news for us. The next item on your agenda is a request from the town of Canterbury to identify a member of the Board of Selectmen to sit on the committee that was voted in by petition to review the feasibility of withdrawing from the Shaker Regional School District. This was a Canterbury-Warren article. Superintendent Tursi is here, in case you have any questions regarding the process, or he's happy to answer them.
Please, please, please.
And so we're looking for the board to, once you've gotten more information, to establish a committee member.
Morning.
Morning.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth.
So, so, fill us in.
What, what happens, what, what happens? I think everybody's got that big, I don't know where to start, buildings, expenses, cost analysis.
So it's the purpose of the committee to do that study for all of those areas. So the process in general is that by statute, we have sixty days, and this is a school board responsibility, not a Board of Selectmen responsibility, and either one of the towns, it's a school board responsibility at this point to develop this committee and do this study. So, we have sixty days to put, put together the first committee meeting. What is required by the statute are four members, specific members, a school board member from Canterbury, a school board member from Belmont, a selectman from Belmont, and a selectman from Canterbury. Those are the required, that's required membership to be on this committee, according to statute. From that point forward, the board could, and this is my recommendation, solicit letters of interest for others that might want to sit on this committee, and then review those letters of interest to establish who was going to be on the committee that's outside of those four standing members. They have sixty days to have the first meeting, and they have one hundred and eighty days to present a recommendation to the State Board of Education as to whether they, the committee is going to recommend with Canterbury withdraw, not withdraw, or they need to extend time for the study. So that has to be the State Board of Education within a hundred and eighty days. If there is a recommendation to withdraw from the Shaker Regional School District, then basically, they have to develop a plan for what that withdrawal looks like, and that's where it comes in, Mr. Pike, all the, all, so what's, what's the cost? And how is Canterbury going to operate, and how is Belmont going to operate? That's two separate school districts. That plan has to be in front of the State Board of Education by November first, so that potentially, you can make it on a ballot for the following March, for both Belmont and Canterbury residents to vote on. So, yes, this was initiated by Canterbury, but what also, people don't realize, that Belmont has an opportunity to vote on it as well.
Right.
So, the purpose of having the committee is to really initiate the study, to develop a recommendation, and during that process, they're really just developing a plan as to what it would look like if both, both towns were separate school districts. And that's what would happen with Canterbury, is that Canterbury would have to become their own SAU. Belmont would remain as SAU eighty, because Belmont is not the town that is requesting to pull from the Shaker Regional School District, so Belmont would remain SAU eighty. Canterbury would become SAU right now, so this has been the trend over the past ten, fifteen years, small towns wanting to break free from cooperatives. We're over a hundred SAUs in the, in the state now. So they would get a new number, probably in the low one hundreds, and then they operate with their own board. They are required to have a superintendent or superintendent services, a business office, they have to have SAU operations. Belmont, also, in that process, will determine what they would do with their current SAU services, as well as basically look at how they want to operate. as well as basically look at how they want to operate as a, as a sole district.
Yeah. What brought this on? Has this happened before? I mean, I'm just...
So there was a study done in the early eighties. When Canterbury initiated the study in the early eighties, they came back as a recommendation not to withdraw. It was expensive. My understanding, the purpose of the petition Warren article was to provide, um, more options for Canterbury middle school and high school students.
To go wherever.
To explore other, other school districts, um, and potentially save money. I, just in experience, I've been through this, I've never seen a, a, a small district being able to save money by going out on their own, but that's the purpose of the study. We all know that there's efficiencies and effectiveness, and you're pooling your resources.
How many student, and you may not know, well, how many, how many students from Canterbury come to Belmont at this point?
Currently, we have a little over fifty students in the middle school, fifty students in the, um, in the high school, and we have a little over a hundred students at Canterbury Elementary School, so total two hundred, roughly two hundred students in the, in the full, in the whole district.
It's just interesting, because obviously, um, back in the day, um, lived in Belmont, and then moved to Canterbury, and went through the elementary, I went through the elementary school in Canterbury. And at the time that it was time for me to go to high school, nobody wanted us. Basically, that's what it boiled down to, all right?
I'll take it personally.
And, I, no, I know, but, but, but again, my older brother and sister were able to finish in Belmont. I ended up busing to Tilton for a period of time, and then it was after that that then Canterbury and, and Belmont came together. I mean, it is unfortunately, fortunate, I think, I know, you know, these students that live, I guess you want to say on the south end of Canterbury, it's a long haul. Because I was two hours on the bus in the morning, two hours on the bus in the afternoon. I was the long haul back in the day, okay? And it was rough. But is it, is it, is it because these, this group is concerned about the quality of education that they're receiving, or is it because, uh, or what? I mean...
You would have to ask the group that...
Who's the selectman that's going to sit on the board from Canterbury?
Uh, Canterbury Board of Selectmen are actually coming to our school board meeting next Tuesday to ask questions. And they would either appoint at that meeting or appoint at the next meeting.
All right. Interesting. So...
We need a volunteer.
Um, and how, here we go, how often are we going to meet?
It's a significant time commitment.
Yeah.
Yep, in the evenings, because our board, our board, it's all work during the day, so the evening meetings, it'll make a significant amount of time.
Sure, because, because you're under, um, you're under the gun, so to speak.
You are, it's a lot of information gathering, processing, and developing plans, communicating with the, with the communities, um, as well as publishing what comes out of the study, so. It's, it's going to be a lot of time for the evening.
What time, what time do these meetings take?
I anticipate it'll probably be around six o'clock.
And what are they going to do? Put half in Canterbury, half in Belmont? So it's going to be at the same time that the school board meets?
I'm, I'm sure it's...
You don't even know that yet? All right.
Randy Johnson is, uh, going to be the chair of the committee.
Who?
Randy Johnson, she's, um, new to the board this year.
Okay.
From Canterbury.
Yeah.
Um, so, and Eric Johnson from Belmont, who sits on the board now for years, is also on the committee.
Yeah.
Randy's the board, and she's the one that would be communicating with the committee and setting the, setting the times and days for meetings. They would not conflict with any of the board meetings.
Sure, that, right. All right.
Don't look at me. I'm not, I, I don't want to get involved in that. My playing board agenda keeps me pretty busy.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's a year-round program, and lately, it's a late-night program.
It is, I know, I know. Oh, yeah, so here I go.
I'm, I'm too opinionated on this subject to be...
Well, I, I'm concerned about being that way, but I guess, um, I mean, I can, not knowing who's going to sit on from the selectmen in Canterbury is probably somebody that I was in school with, but, um... Yeah.
So as for being opinionated, that's okay, because what you're really looking for is a well-balanced debate.
Yeah, yeah.
You want people to see both sides.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
As to pros and cons of withdrawing from the school district, so it's okay.
And this is going to be through November anyways, because by, from the time, when November comes, you're kind of, now you have to take it to the voters in March, correct?
If the recommendation is to withdraw, if there is a recommendation to not withdraw, it's dead in the water.
Oh, it is. All right.
This committee does not recommend withdrawal.
Yeah.
It's dead in the water. They just have to present that to the State Board of Education. It doesn't make it on the ballot. What makes it on the ballot is if they determine to withdraw, and then both towns have an opportunity to vote on the article.
Okay.
Would it be reasonable if the board, um, appointed one member to sit on the committee and an al, an alternate in the event there was a, a conflict and that one board member couldn't make it? Can they, is there a...
The problem is, it's probably hard because you're going to, you're going to, you're going to have to absorb.
That's necessary, if you want to have a consistent presence.
Okay, all right, all right.
And I would also anticipate that the group is appointed to be on this committee, that selectmen would provide updates to this board.
Oh, yeah, of course, of course. All right.
I'm always happy to come and answer questions.
Okay.
My involvement is fairly minimal. I'm, I'm basically a, uh, information gatherer, provider for the committee.
I think it's unanimous.
Unanimous.
Um, okay.
So if you're going to be joining the committee or...
Sure, sure. Yeah. All right, okay. I'll, I will, um, yeah. I don't think I have a choice. It doesn't look that way. All right, okay. Very good. I'll, um, I'll agree to serve on that committee. Okay.
So if you could just shoot me your contact information, you want to go through the board's selectman email?
Um, actually...
I prefer my personal, if you don't mind.
Yeah, she prefers hers, it's easier, so I'll send you that, as well as her contact phone.
Or your contact information to Randy.
Okay.
Communication will come from her.
All right. Okay, awesome.
It'll come from the SAU eighty email.
Okay, yeah. And you can include my cell phone number, obviously. Yeah, all right, okay. I'll wait to hear.
I have a question.
What's that?
Do, do you recall, like, what the, um, actual vote was it? Was it significant or at their...
Oh, at this...
I mean, I mean, yeah, their, their meeting, I'm curious.
No, it's a hand vote. The traditional town meeting is a hand vote, not a count, so how it reads on the, uh, art, on the ballot is a pass. There's no numbers.
Oh, there's no numbers.
It must have been close enough with the a's and n's that they didn't, or not close enough, that they didn't need to do a hand count.
I'm just curious, is it weird? Was it marginal or...
No, there, my understanding is at the town meeting, there were three people that spoke, and then the fourth person spoke, moving, moving the motion on the floor, and it was, um, well, not like the conversation, because my understanding, field of room was, there was no, there was no harm in doing the study. People had different opinions about that, but...
Of course. Yeah, I was just curious, is it weird though? Strength was, was there a movement or was it...
My understanding, field of room was it was going to pass, so they didn't get into a long discussion about it.
Well, I suppose it's like anything else, if, if, if there is a, I'll say a few people that, you know, this is a way of, of either squashing it or, or people get really involved and move forward with it, I guess. I don't know.
The people that attended, the candidates.
Yep.
Right? All from Canterbury, or three or four of them from Canterbury that were running for office, and they all seemed to agree that they wanted to bring this forward.
Well, um, Kent did, no, Kent did not, no, Kent did not want.
The other three, two or three were there, they just wanted...
I can't remember the other gentleman's name, um, the other candidate.
They'd been working on building a voter base, if you would.
Yeah.
That people brought this forward.
And I guess my question is, and probably I should know this, who, who, who became selectman?
I'm sorry?
Who was elected to selectman this year in Can...
Ken Ruswick.
Ken Ruswick, okay. All right, okay.
I have a question.
Yes, Ron.
Well, if it, if it came to a vote, in Canterbury, both will be voted.
They're all voting?
They count the number of votes in both communities. Can Belmont override Canterbury because of the numbers?
No, it's a four, it's a total vote, so there's a larger vote, voter base than in Belmont, so.
So, yes.
It, it could, based on that, but you don't, we don't break out the votes by Canterbury.
No, no, but that's what I'm saying, it, it comes in, you know, just like we have meetings now. Say a hundred people from Canterbury said, yeah, they want to leave, and you've got a hundred and fifty from Belmont saying, no, that rides Canterbury, so.
Right, because they're all, it's kind of all pooled together, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all pooled together, so it's, they just go to both towns, so it's a majority. I want to say it's three-fifths. It's a tough number to reach.
Yeah, all right, okay. Um, do you have any other questions?
No.
Of course not. Any questions?
No, no.
All right. Gee, thanks. Oh, you have one?
Yeah, well, not of him.
Oh, not of him.
Yeah, but you're free to go, if you don't like the answer.
Yeah, yeah, down to the end. Item C, we're going to move down to the end, Jean, just because it's a large... John would like to just move the C, so we'll...
That, um, the code enforcement?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Mark, they're going to move you just to the...
We're going to move you down the line a little bit, Mark. Do you have an appointment?
I have an offer for inspection at noon.
Um, let's just do it then.
Okay.
All right. We'll, we'll do the code enforcement next. Okay, no, no.
I'd love to be a member at large on that, on the Canterbury thing.
It's, um... All right, we're ready.
I gave you a fairly, well, yeah, fairly detailed list on everything that I'm involved in. I've had a few things, you know, somewhat, somewhat changed since I, since I did this.
All right.
I didn't know if anybody had any, any questions, uh, where, where we're at, what, what we're doing. At, at this point in, in the properties, the involved properties, as, as I'm moving one off, I don't know, I guess the best way to describe...
You get to one?
Well, well, yeah, it's actually more than that. It's kind of like the onion, you know, you start peeling the, the layers off, and as I move, you know, one of the, the major issues off, you know, once you get down to the, to the next layer, it's, it's not one, it's eight that, you know, that, that come on the, you know, come on the plate, because there's, it's about, I, I've kind of, in driving around, it's like four different layers of, of, you know, violations within the, you know, within the town. So, as we start to move deeper, then the, the workload increases.
Well, don't you think that obviously, um, as you get out there and, and as we start addressing some of these issues, that it's the word of mouth, and people are probably coming forward with complaints or issues that they wouldn't have come forward with?
Yes.
But now they're seeing, um, some positive results from what you're doing? Is it kind of bringing more people out of the woodwork, so to speak, and...
Yes. So, I mean, previous practice was nothing would be looked at and investigated unless an official, you know, complaint comes in.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I've had numerous one, numerous phone call complaints where someone is not comfortable because, because it's their, their neighbor.
Neighbor.
Or, or potential, you know, situ, you know, situation. So my stance is, so I take the information, and I tell them, I'll, I'll take a drive-by, you know, and if I see what you see, then I'll initiate, you know, initiate a complaint. And so that's how I've, I've handled, handled that, and, uh, I would say more, more people are comfortable or more comfortable, you know, calling and, you know, and talking about that. When I, the way that I explain everything, sometimes people just go online, and they'll, they'll grab the complaint form, and they'll e, e, they'll email to me within, you know, within a few hours. But it definitely has set some, some people at more ease, you know, when I, when I've said that, I will take a drive-by, you know, and if it's glaring, then, then I'll initiate a complaint. Uh, and there's been, there's probably a dozen, a dozen of these where I've gone to investigate, you know, a, a complaint, and as I drive down the road, because I had no reason to drive down the, the road, it's, holy cow, what's that? And, you know, where did all that stuff come from? And so that sometimes initiates, you know, two or three of complaints as well. So, it's a, it's growing list.
Yeah.
And I mean, I'm, I'm fairly, fairly happy at the, at the list of things that have gotten off the plate. Um, I've, I've been, I'm surprised at some of the movement that I've gotten on, on properties. Uh, most specifically with two ninety-two Dural Mountain Road, um, there's a metal dumpster down there now, and he's filling it. Uh, and there was a, a trailer recently at one thirty depot, uh, getting rid of tires.
One of the conversations that Mark and I had, um, recently was, um, the length of time it seems to take for things to get through the legal process. And if you recall, several years ago, um, we had the conversation about potentially, you know, the, the code enforcement officer, individual being able to take those, um, to the court systems.
Small times or something, yeah, yeah, I do remember that.
You know, rather than involving the attorney.
The lawyer.
We had talked about the possibility, the prosecutor at the police department, however, of course, they were so busy that there wasn't an opportunity for that. But I think Mark had expressed to me at least that he would be interested in, in possibly pursuing what it might take for him to be able to, to do that, um, to possibly move things along quicker than where we are right now. I think that seemed like a very reasonable idea. Obviously, you know, his schedule is pretty busy in his twenty-four hours that he has right now. I'm not sure if he could fit court in, but I think it's something that we want to prepare for in the future, and where this position actually goes as we start to look towards, um, twenty twenty-three. Because I think it's, it's truly amazing, when I actually saw the complete list of code enforcement issues, I was like, wow, because what I hear from sitting in my office is him specifically speaking to certain individuals, and you hear that fairly frequently. It could be two or three times a week, for example, two ninety-two Dural Mountain Road or, or the Depot Street property. And so you think in your mind, oh, well, you know, there, there's not that many out there, but there is a substantial list of code enforcement violations that he is, you know, that he's working on. Um, and I think that, you know, anything we can do to support them coming to a resolution is positive, totally positive in the town's, you know, from the town's perspective, so.
I, I would think moving, moving forward, I, I think there's a, there's an understanding that things, things either don't, don't move or don't move quickly when it comes to the court system. And if, if we have, if we have the ability to start bringing, start bringing people in.
Sooner.
So, well, sooner and quicker. And my understanding with the, with the RSA, with the, with the state, with, um, with code enforcement, is, yeah, it's a representative, and, and I'm not, I'm not taking away from any, you know, any, you know, attorney, you know, involvement that, that we have, but a lot of this is, is very factual-based information that's being presented to a judge. Uh, you know, so why not, you know, why not, you know, use me for that?
And not to be rude, you're probably cheaper than the attorney.
Absolutely, but then...
Less expensive.
Less expensive, no, cheaper. That's okay.
But, but then, we're not dealing with another layer of...
Of course.
You know, getting, you know, getting to a judge. So, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
I mean, I can present facts with the best of them, uh, you know, especially, and I, and I believe that I would be able to present information
because it might continue contact with the, with the property owners, whereas, you know, at, at least on a, on an initial basis, you know, an attorney won't, you know, won't be able to relay that as well.
I have a question.
Absolutely, yes.
I brought a complaint to you, and you immediately jumped on it on twelve Brown Hill Road about automobiles and a business running in a residential area. Sense in this shed there that somebody's punched a hole in the back wall, got a wood stove in it, and they're living in it.
Yep.
And they're living in it twenty-four hours a day.
I believe that's the sum. So I, I've, I've been in contact with Mr. Greigwood, um, on numerous occasions. I have not yet been allowed access to the property to finalize an inspection based on what happened at the beginning of the December with the death of a tenant. So, working with him, you know, on, on that. So, working with him, you know, on that, I was happy that the 25-plus cars.
Yes, they did.
That showed up, you know, left fairly, fairly quickly. There's been at least one RV that is, that is left. And I believe there is a new tenant in the, in the, in the trailer itself. I do not see smoke coming out of, coming out of that shed that, that is there. We've had cold enough days to where there probably, you know, should be.
The neighbors have.
Oh, still, okay. Because I mean, I, I drive by it a couple of times a day. But, yes, so that's, I'm, I'm still trying to get access to the property to be able to do the.
Thank you.
To finish things off from what was generated at the beginning of December.
That's right about the, I mean, you didn't tell the, was it the guy with the chainsaw that cut the hole in the shed? It's, you know, best, best word for it, it's a Mickey Mouse wood stove setup in there, good way to get killed, I wouldn't want that to happen.
Right. Well, I have to say, Mark, because I said, I've read every one of these, and I, it's, I don't know, I don't know if I should be embarrassed as a Belmont resident with all the violations, or, but you sure are, have a lot of things going on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying. It's, it's a, it's a fairly furious pace.
Yep.
You know, with, with 24 hours a, a week. So, I don't mean, there, there's definitely, I'm, I'm going to get to a, a limit.
Oh, of course, of course.
I don't think, I don't think I've, I've reached that, you know, quite yet, you know, quite yet.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I'm, I'm satisfied with the, with the, with the position. I didn't, I didn't know whether or not I was going to be able to be effective in it, in it or not. I didn't know if I was going to be able to, to like it. And so, so far, I've been pleasantly surprised on, on all.
Well, and, and again, I will say that, and it's probably been a couple of weeks, there was something on Facebook of the property on 106, you know, where the states put the fence up and whatever, and it was a negative about, you know, eyesore and this and that. And it was great to see that actually people came back and said, well, that's in the court system. It's, that's, the town is on it, and it's, and I don't even know who that person was, it was not a familiar name, but they were very well aware that the town is on it, and the town's doing everything they can, and it's in the court system. And they went, oh, good, good, you know, it was, you know, it was kind of, it was nice to see that instead of being, you know, thrown under the bus, so to speak. So, and those are, that's okay. I mean, not that we wouldn't like to see that cleaned up, obviously, but at least people know that we are doing, we're trying to take care of it. Some things are out of our control.
There's been a little bit of movement within the stuff.
Yeah.
The items on, on that property, it has recently transferred ownership. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
Yeah.
But we'll, we'll see.
See, yeah, awesome, all right.
So, I'm actually, I'm, I'm meeting with them tomorrow.
Awesome.
Tomorrow afternoon to, you know, walk things, get it going.
Yeah, it's a good way to get your steps in, yeah.
Right.
I don't have any questions, I mean.
I think you're doing a great job. We haven't had this enforcement in this area.
Yeah, for a long time.
But it's got to be done, unfortunately.
And it's a surprise to a lot of people, and, and they're generally, in some of these cases, it's just, it's an education piece.
Yeah.
To where, whether they didn't know, or whether they just said that, you know, said that they didn't know, but, you know, once, you know, once they know that I know, or that, you know, or that.
Once it, once it's brought to their attention, right.
Correct, right. And there's, there's been a lot of positive movement on, on a lot of pieces of the property. Some of them a little, a little disappointing that things haven't, you know, haven't happened, but I think that's, you know, that's.
The process.
Right, that's the cost of your business.
Yep, Rome wasn't built in a day.
Correct.
Yep, that's for sure. Two days.
It was more torn down.
More torn down, right, right. Awesome, all right. I have no questions. Sunny, any questions?
Oh, I think you're doing a hell of a job, though, because there's a lot of violations in this town that kind of more so than I really thought.
And realistically, like I said, we talked about the whole, the whole onion thing, you know, there's probably, I mean, realistically, there's probably another 50, you know, that are ready to come on, you know, come on board as I, you know, start to take, you know, take some off. So, that's, you know, that's where it's, you know, it's, it's very, you know.
Job justification here.
Yeah, well, and that would be great. I would be very, I'd be very willing, you know, to, to move to, to a full-time position, but also be used in great aftercapacity as well.
Good, all right, awesome.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
We're good?
I'm released.
Thank you. You're released.
Thank you, Mark.
All right.
Go get them.
The next item on your agenda is a memo from Sarah, our town planner, requesting appointments to the LRPC Transportation Advisory Committee. Each year or every two years, we need to reappoint or appoint individuals to serve. She's recommending that she be reappointed to fill the voting position typically held by the town planner for the year 2022 to 2024, and she's requesting that Brian Jacks, as our Assistant DPW Director, be appointed to fill the currently vacant position for the period 2021 to 2023.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fire Department, new hire.
Yes, you have two new hires, and I believe the chief is here, to review those with you.
Obviously, we are listed for the two new positions. We put out, we had four applications. One who called us and said that he couldn't come in because it was a day off from his other work, so chose not to inform them with that. And then one was not certified. Fire, as soon as it exposed, about three or four days afterwards, we ended up with some more applications, which we know we have a candidate that's going to be going to, most likely go to Concord. Place of fire, obviously, you don't have to beat a dead horse that pays initially, or it's Concord Fire Department, seven dollars going out of the way.
We can't compete with that, yeah.
It's going to be impossible to compete with these larger communities, because like Chief Lewandowski says, natural is going to be, there's always going to be somebody. I think it's just going to be tough, you know, it is.
It's where that person wants to live, and where he wants to work, or he or she.
You know what, and maybe just a company, we're, we're negotiations, and not just the owner, but you're never going to be up and then up and then that. You're going to be, it's going to be tough, because you're going to be chasing the tail.
Yeah.
So, I did wonder, the first candidate is Trevor Gilbert, I call him Travis, I don't know why he keeps calling him that, but I'll try not to screw that too many more times.
Just call him Trev.
He's on a lot of fire this time. He was a young man who was obviously, as a young man, probably made some hard decisions, and he owned every one of them. I called a lot of the people that he didn't even know I called, and he came, very well recommended for his position. The other one is James Hayes. James Hayes was our lemon student, so is a lemon student, who now is going to be one of our full-time staff. He graduated from Luton Air College, and he's on the road.
Nice, so he was kind of already trained, so to speak, if he lived in.
Definitely, he's passed his EMT, he's passed his, basically, other things, so he'll come on board. He'll be easier for us, because he's been near the school. He's actually on our call, I think, as well.
Yeah, so he kind of knows the area, awesome.
Mike, are these, like the police department, when you hire them, do they have an obligation to stay with you, or?
This is not an obligation, I believe, among Mark, is if you send him to the academy.
If you send him to the academy.
So, right now, we can do with the police department, but the, the fire service has never really done this.
Okay.
I think that's a change that's going to speed coming down the pipe, where, you know, Chief Lewandowski hires, you pay for the process to get him to where we're at, sort of full-time, and then contract for them for the period of time. I think you're going to end up seeing that at some point, because I, I think we're, that we're limiting ourselves in our community, because, like we said, you could have somebody who wants to call on, and they'll start, well, we'll say, over this X amount of time, we'll get you certifications, so you'll be done, be working, and so forth, and you'll see that. That's something that will be coming down the pipe for all of us.
You know, it's all going to change. It's, it's.
It's, you know, it's, it does. It goes up and down, you know, it's, it's a pendulum, and it's right now, it's swinging this way, unfortunately.
Now, are these two positions replacing people that have left, or are these the new ones? These are the new ones, all right.
And when, when the fire fire choose, chose, if she gets the final, which she says there's some process to go, if she does, I do have a candidate, at least two more in view for that.
Okay, all right, cool, all right. Do we need a motion to accept these? No?
Um, you typically would do that, just to move in accordance with the chief's amendments.
I'll make a motion for the two new fire, members of our fire department, and Trevor Gilbert, and the James Hayes, the appointed fireman, as per the recommendation of the fire chief.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Very.
Thank you, Mike. Traffic ordinance amendments.
Yes, at the request of Chief Lewandowski, we actually, about, oh, it's a little more than a month or so ago, we had had a request about sending the traffic ordinance to, there was an individual that we were working with relative to parking, I believe it was parking along Main Street, and District 3 had requested that we send potentially a copy of our traffic ordinance. Chief Lewandowski reviewed it, determined that there were a couple of things in it that were outdated, no longer retained. So, what you have in front of you are, is the revised ordinance for your consideration.
Maybe just minor changes that.
I was just going to say, where were the changes, because they weren't marked?
So, one of them, well, it should have come through as highlighted. At least one of them was the identifying, and this he had actually spoken with Craig about, identifying the restriction on overnight parking vehicles from April 15th to.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I'm sorry, November 15th to April 30th, just adding the hours, meaning inclusive between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And the other was removing one of the parking lots that no longer.
Is a parking lot.
Is no longer a parking lot, which was adjacent to the police station.
Oh, okay.
Right, the corner meaning house parking lot. So, those were really the only two changes, I believe, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, those were the two main, major changes.
Yeah, yeah. So, I don't have a final copy for your signature. I think if you discuss it today, and then I bring it forward to your next meeting, you can sign it.
I have no comments. I read through it, but I didn't know where the changes were, but.
I had hoped it would come through as highlighted and read, but.
I mean, that makes sense.
When you printed it, it may not have, so.
Yeah, that's okay. I mean, the hours, you see that on most signs anyways, when you see the parking bands, I believe, yeah.
Our signs have a date.
But no time.
Of time.
All right.
So, it's interpretation of what's over.
Of course, you got to cover your bases, yeah, all right. Do you need a motion to accept these, or?
If you would like them, then I would bring it forward to you for your signatures. I actually can put it in your signature file for next week, and you can sign them.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the new, I'll say new, or updated.
amended.
Amended, however, ordinance, ordinance regulating traffic as proposed by our chief and effective April 2022.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You also notice we took out the.
Oh, now we tell us this.
Parking space and a half that was still left on Main Street.
Okay, right, yes.
Sent a letter to the OT.
Yes.
They cooperated that with the engineer, the engineer came down, made the post-it, and so now from, from the end, the exit of the building store.
Yeah.
The rest of the way out toward the church is no problem.
Does that include the park, the sidewalk?
They've, they've been talked to, and they're doing very well on keeping it tucked right track to the, so that the sidewalk is not.
Not, okay, all right.
They're doing well there. They tried to sneak a car in now and then to park out front, but keep something out and remove the lines.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they've got it.
All right, okay, there's always going to be something, all right. What do we have for new business, Jean?
We do have one piece, or actually a couple of pieces of other new business. The chief brought forward a potential grant for a yellow blinking light, which would be a speed limit sign, correct? That they have received a grant for. Total amount, or total value of the, the lighting is $5,398. It does not require a public hearing by the board, but it does require that you discuss it and just move to accept.
Is that like the one I saw in Laconia, that's like a, like a.
It's about this big.
Yeah, it's about this big.
It flashes your speed.
And I was speeding, and, and it starts flashing, I'm like, what the heck is this?
What this also does is it's had software built into it that's also going to record the speeds of cars for a period of 30 days, it'll maintain those.
So, you're going to move it around?
We can move it around.
But that would look like it was up on a permanent.
Nope, it mounts to a pole, but we can, we can move it.
All right, so you put the pole and then just move it.
We're going to put it at the elementary school on the downhill side, because of the speeds there. So, not only do we, did we upgrade the, the signs there, I don't know, three or four years ago, so now they're, they're actually bright. You can see it when, when the school's in session. This will actually give the speed of the cars coming downhill.
Yep, it does.
But if we have other issues, like we have issues on Seabee Road, we have issues in different places, we can actually take this unit and move it. It'll actually give us the data of all the cars that have gone through there, what their average speeds have been, when the speed seemed to be higher or lower, and it's all Bluetooth, so once we assign someone to maintain that, they literally can pull up next to the sign and shoot the data right into a computer, and we have it.
So, in other words, you could, you could have those poles stuck in the ground wherever, and then just move it.
And just move the image.
People are getting really daring, though, aren't they, on Facebook? They're actually taking pictures of people's cars with their license plates. I'm going, oh, my God.
This sign actually, and I think it's, it's, if you want to buy this, next process that goes with it, because it's an advanced sign.
It's a record.
We'll take, we'll take photograph, so it's an interesting, it's interesting.
Yeah, okay, so we just need, what do we need?
Motion to accept it.
Okay, so, I don't have anything, right?
No, no.
So, how much?
It's a motion to accept the grant in the amount of $5,398 for the purchase of a Shield 12 speed display and all necessary equipment.
That's on that list, that's right.
That's on the list provided to us by All Traffic Solutions.
I'll make the motion.
Yep.
Seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The company, ATF, every year they donate one unit somewhere.
Yeah.
Chester, I believe, were the ones that were recipients last year. We had put in for this months ago.
Yeah.
And we were just notified that.
Awesome.
Were the.
Isn't it interesting how we have a new police station, and we're getting all of this grant money now? It just is fascinating how we couldn't get anything.
Plus, it's like the life scan.
Yeah, yeah.
We were, we were on the list for that life scan for years.
For years.
There was no way they were going to put us, you know, $35,000, $40,000 unit in that ability.
Yeah.
Not going to happen.
Interesting, well, good, we'll take advantage of all of it.
Now we are getting it, it's just a matter of, it needs to be manufactured and centralized.
Yeah, awesome, good. Other new business, Jean?
Yes, I would.
Well, I'm sorry, Ron.
When are we going to have open house, or like?
We.
Once we get the pavement done and the landscaping.
We'd like the pavement and the landscaping done, and then, yeah, we're kind of, and it's like anything else.
I mean, soon. I mean, so.
It's a lot like, it's like the elevator, hurry up and wait, okay?
Certified last week.
Was it certified? Rock on.
Certified last week.
I think I might stop by just to get on it.
Elevator's finally in operation.
Good, awesome, so we have all the, everything inside is done.
Bob's coming, he's coming in this week with a crew.
Yeah.
And they're going to start working on the punch list.
Punch list, good.
We still have two companies that need to come back and make corrections.
Yeah, which is.
Which is normal.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean.
Okay, as soon as we can get pavement and.
I know they're, they've talked to DBU.
Good.
They're getting put into a schedule for DBU to get back here, so they get the asphalt done, get the final, final dressing done on, on the outside.
And I think, are, are we planning this year, Craig, to do that parking lot for the park? Was that kind of, had we talked about that for this year?
We, we did not budget additional funds for it. However, I know that we had talked about potentially, if there was anything in Craig's asphalt.
Yeah.
Budget, that we could potentially do that.
All right, all right, just to.
I, I think getting a price, pricing on it would be ideal, depending on where we are, because I believe it'll be more expensive.
Yeah, because the pavement, pavement's gone up, yeah.
True, if we're going to do that, I think it's something that, you know, it's like, we're talking about the parking lot down.
Yeah, for the trail, right, yes.
It's something that really needs to be boxed out and prepped correctly, so.
There's a little bit prep, more prep.
Yeah, it's just kind of, when they slap some pavement.
No, 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 no. Yeah.
If you got to do it, do it right, but don't.
Yeah, totally agree, all right.
If we're going to do that, we would have to, be, you know, properly prep it, so.
Okay, all right, all right.
Question, I got a question. Never broke that fence, chief.
Sure.
It runs under the, there's a, there's a black culvert, I'm not sure about. So, the pole runs down through, comes out, down, we'll call this street.
Hope runs down through and comes out, down, uh, called history.
Oh, is that underneath it?
The one that comes down through, across from there, used to be where the old, uh, bathhouse was. It was, uh, an opening there that they used to have.
Yeah, it's all, it's all enclosed drainage.
All enclosed drainage.
Yeah.
That they fixed that.
Yeah, we actually, that, there was one little area when they were doing the P D, just, we decided to take the fence out. It was like a large rock structure kind of basin type thing, right? We were like, you know what, let's just, we put in a, you know, we did like a, not, not a precast basin, but we, we built a basin and kinda tied those two pipes in. Fixed that, so.
Gotta last for thirty years.
No, we should look at, if there are pipes under there, we should look at those to make sure that those are all right, we're gonna try and run and do that.
Yeah, yeah, Kevin?
I just had a question for the chief, what kind of posts is required for that speed according to the model?
Just the middle post, currently the, the signs that are posted at the elementary school right now, it will affect right to that.
It's one of those T posts?
No, a regular, nope.
Oh, I thought it was a T post.
Aluminum round, round aluminum posts.
Oh, all right, I thought it was a T post.
Bob donated a post, and put one on Danone Street, so when school goes on vacation, maybe we can move that around like you're talking about.
That's what we're gonna try to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we wanna make it, we wanna make that mobile, so we can do that, because it's gonna give us data that, instead of running actual, you know, counters out there.
Got a nice location for it.
Okay.
Okay, next, new business?
Well, I would like to, I would like to offer a comment. We had gotten the locality equipment matching program grant, which was for the two boats for the fire department. And having been going through this process of these grants and having to submit documentation and getting our reimbursement and so forth, and I had sent them a message this morning saying that we've, you know, we've paid the invoice, you know, what do you need from me to, to send me back my money? And they wrote back to me and said, all I need to do is send them the receipt. I have never worked with a state agency that has moved that quickly and that simply in a lot of years. I was totally impressed. So there, all I have to do is send them the receipt, which is the cancel check that Catherine had written, and they're gonna reimburse us the, the fifty thousand for, for the boats.
Quick.
So, that was really incredibly quick. I just wanted to say that because I just was amazed.
John.
So, the other, the other piece of new business, we had a request for a, an abatement on a water bill.
Yeah, oh, yes, I did see that, yes.
The individual had a leak that they had to retain the services of a, a plumbing contractor to repair. It did cost them substantial money to get that fixed, and they're looking for an abatement on their water bill. You know, based on their, you know, their, their usage was over eighty thousand gallons, so they're looking for something that would be more realistic. I don't have that with me, I'm sorry, John, but I would be happy to-
I would make that difference.
Whatever the difference was between the two. I will tell you that we are currently looking at a policy for abatements on water and sewer bills that would be, would give everyone a clear set of guidelines as to what we would abate for and not abate for. And leaks was one of the, the topics of discussion that had come up from some of the other towns, and a lot of the other towns are not abating for leaks because they feel that it really is up to the property owner to be able to identify it and address it. So that would be something that'll come forward to you and that you can give due consideration to. But in this instance, we'll abate it back to what their normal water bill would have been.
I mean, how often do we get that?
We do, it's not very often.
I don't think we've had that for quite-
I think that in this instance, it was different because it was actually outside of the-
Yeah, it was-
It was in the ground.
It was in the ground, that's what, when you're reading it.
Versus a, versus a leaking toilet, which you would think that someone would realize, because the toilet's running all the time, so.
Well, I, Jean, we have, where the water leak was, we have an external meter, so they're out in a pit.
Yeah.
At the pit, it was at the trailer park. So, from the meter pit to the house is where-
The leak was.
Right, so it was in the ground.
Normally, normally, if the meter's internal, you would not be- Then I'd get, I'd be getting bill for it, it's an external leak, so.
Yep.
It would be only, only something internal, like a running toilet or something like that.
Yep.
You have in front of you a flyer that Alicia prepared and had put together and had spoken with Craig regarding doing another community-wide effort to beautify Belmont and celebrate Earth Day. They had determined that between April twenty-second and April twenty-fourth, that was best time to hold the event. And she was looking for your approval on whether you wanted to move forward with that, again this year. She did confirm with Craig that those dates were good, just to make sure.
Yep. There's enough of it out there to be picked up.
I'm hoping we get the inmates, we, we have some residents from the Belmont County. No, you have to change your language every year here, so.
Are they allowing them now that COVID's kind of?
They're, they're talking about it.
Oh, okay, so they haven't fully?
I understand, I'm, we're high up on the list, so.
Good, good, awesome.
All right, and my understanding is Cynthia had provided to you a week or two ago a list of properties that potentially she would like to pursue and send notice for tax collectors' deeds. They are nine Deutile, yeah, Dural Mountain Road, one forty-eight Horn Road, and four Leisure Lane, which is located in Pleasant Valley. So she would like to proceed with those. She's also had contact with Mr. Dupont relative some, to some mobile homes that we have over in Pine Gardens. But at this point, she hasn't heard back from him in regards to those. But if you're okay with her going forward with those, she would like to move forward with that.
I don't have a problem with it.
Not at all.
Perfect. I do not have any other new business, I don't have any old business. I do have a non-public session for you, it is with our town planner, Sarah Wardy. She is going to come through on Zoom, and she was unable to be in the office today. So once you get to that point, we will ask everyone else to please drop off the meeting so that you can have the conversation with Sarah.
Any other, what?
I guess, one of the reasons why I'm here is Jessica is a new member of the library trustees.
Okay.
And she's, she's new to town politics, wanna know how it works, so that's why she's here to explain it, because obviously the library's got issues with, gonna have trouble with addition of what they're gonna do. We thought they were gonna do that last year when we, when we had a meeting and, well, she's trying to figure out how, how, and everything works, but I'm just, uh, introducing her so that-
Jessica.
She gets to see how, how-
You can see how I get, I get overruled?
I've been repaying a selectman, but, but you know, kids don't pay attention to what's going on in town. And now, you know, she's getting involved and maybe someday, you know, you might run that other select.
There you go.
Hi, I, thank, I'd love to just be here as a member of, just to represent the library. It looks like all the other town departments are here, and I'd love the library to be, just to be with y'all.
It's been there forever, it's been there forever. It's a beautiful building, that's for sure, yeah, awesome.
Nice to see some young people here.
Yes, it's nice to see, you're exactly right, yeah, appreciate it, that's for sure.
Will you call an oldie?
I'm, I'm not calling anybody old.
Donna, did you have something?
I just, I was just wondering if there was any updates on the POCs and recs, considering that I know there was some advertisements that had been put out there.
We have received four applications with a fifth coming in this morning, if I'm correct. At this point, we will need to review those and set up interviews for those. We felt that there were one or two very strong candidates for the position from, from the group of applicants that we did receive. So we're excited about at least having the conversation. I think Alicia and I briefly touched base last week and discussed that the reality of, of being able to pull something together and have something in place for, you know, a June start date is, is gonna be tough. You know, based on, you know, based on the market right now, I mean, the hiring market is, is just not there. And a number of the communities in the Lakes region have had a huge head start on us relative to camp counselors, lifeguards, et cetera. But sooner we can get these candidates in and get an opportunity to interview them, we'll move forward.
That brought up another, I saw, Jean, that you posted on the community page that our park had lots of junk, broken bottles and, and such. And I guess my question to you was, I was glad to see it on the community page because obviously we had a fairly large group here that is pushing for the skate park, and we're considering one of the spots as being the park. And I guess I was wondering if anybody came forward to help clean up the mess?
Well, we certainly had a number of different responses on the, the Facebook page. Alicia and I both received correspondence from Patrick again this morning, that Sargent Park took another hit over the weekend. I haven't had a chance to get something out about that, but there's been a lot of trash. It was noted that a concerned student had said that there had been a large group of kids abusing a piece of equipment, and I'm not sure what you would call that.
Marred around.
Oh, the, the round thing, the thing that goes around, yeah.
They broke a shaft and the bearings on that piece of equipment. Patrick is obviously going to work with Kyle to see if they can fix it. Everyone is, is very supportive and offers numerous comments about it, and, you know, shame on the kids, or shame on whoever's doing it. We didn't get any volunteers offering to, you know, come out and police it or help us clean it up, but we certainly, you know, had support from the community saying, that's terrible, they shouldn't be, you know, that shouldn't be happening and so forth. But it's, it's an ongoing problem. He had, he had graffiti last week. So it's, it's almost weekly that something's happening in the park. Now that it's basically open, you're never gonna be able to police it enough with a, a park attendant to not have that happen. It's, it's just an ongoing, it's an ongoing issue, and I mean, you know, we do-
Well, you know, and I just know, you know, obviously, we had the group here, and, and I thought, okay, that they were gonna kind of be in charge of it, but obviously they're not. They want it built, and they're turning it over to us, so, and again, here you go, trying to hire people to fill positions. I mean, we have two maintenance people that are working tirelessly, okay? And now we're adding this problem, and I guess, I was, I guess I was kind of surprised that this group didn't come forward and organize some kids, them, to go in and help clean up, but, yeah. I, I, it's, people need to be aware of that.
I know, we're getting, we're getting a number of requests to open the, the bathrooms over there, and I'm just-
Yeah, yeah.
I envision, you know, people stuffing things down the toilets and the toilets overflowing, and Patrick having one more thing that they're going to have to attend to, and I mean, I, I feel bad. I know if you have a young child and you bring them to the park and they have to go to the bathroom, it's sad to think that they have to leave and go all the way home, especially if they're clear across town. I mean, certainly during the days that town hall is open, they could come down to town hall if they had to, but it's just, it's a shame, we have a beautiful building there, but, and I don't, it sounds terrible, we're afraid to use it.
Is there actually a committee of names and people that, they all stood up that day?
But we have-
They wanted to vote in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Where are these people as a committee with a chairman and a vice chairman?
They have, they have three members. They, they provided me with a list of three members.
Be involved in this hiring after you review the candidates?
Once we go through the interview process, we'll certainly invite, you know, them to participate, as well as, you know, a board member to participate when we narrow it down. But I don't know how much of their time they're gonna give to volunteering in that effort, as far as, you know, cleanups and hall monitors, so to speak. I know, yeah, it's tough.
Just add something to the, to the park. Week or so ago, I was called out, I was out till the wee hours of the morning with a crash on Union Road. They eventually went to a medical, and then I was in town. I caught two kids running through, running through a yard at one-thirty in the morning. Apparently, this is turning into some kind of a deal now on the weekends. They're running through yards all through town here like ninjas, you can't see them.
Yeah, because they're, they're probably in-
And I saw this head go behind one of Danny Green's wood pipes. So I flew down into the fire station, and I saw, I saw the head bobbing through, and he ran up and he hid behind the Irving Station. So I kept an eyeball on him, Evan had just cleared the same medical call that I was on, he was in town, I sent him up for the air- and we ended up catching two. The one I saw, and then there was another one that was humpered in there, but we know there were, there were at least four that were up. Two of them, we couldn't catch, we caught the two, so we identified two of them.
Juveniles?
Yeah, well, we call them juveniles, but they're under eighteen.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah.
And parents didn't even know they were out, they sneak out, and next thing you know, they're, so I don't know what else they're doing yet, but they're up. And at that time of the morning, with, with the schedule that I have being, being down on people, only got one car in the road. And you generally got something going on, so.
Yeah, the amount of foot traffic that goes through that parking lot at times, I was like, morning.
Because you got, you've got cameras, right?
Astronomical, it's unbelievable the amount of traffic that goes through that parking lot, it's like midnight and four, but, I just-
So chief, the park, now there's, there's trash in the park, isn't there cameras that go under the park?
So there are currently, there currently are cameras that are, or were previously in the park. There was a server that's located that was recording the video, that's in the bathhouse, that's currently there. I had asked Patrick just last week what the status was of the cameras. He recommended that we have the camera company come out and actually take a look at them, see if there's any, if they are currently working, what we need to do to repair them, and so forth. They are old, I will tell you, I think it's been, ooh, I wanna say it's been at least five, six, seven years since those were installed.
Five, seven.
Yeah, so, they're gonna have to be, but again, the problem is, how many cameras are we gonna have to put up to capture, you know?
Well, that, that, this has been years, though, we've heard about the park problems, and people coming from out of town, and drugs right next to the police station, so, I mean, I think that would be one place to eliminate this trash problem, because I got a camera, I can see a catwalk across my driveway. So if you see somebody throwing out trash, maybe they need to be arrested and come pick them up, because how do you ever hear everybody?
Throwin' trash, we would arrest them. The problem is, is, is I think a lot of this is being done after midnight.
Yeah.
I think it's between that midnight, four, four, four-thirty in the morning, the only these kids are out here tearing, tearing the tunnel.
Another camera student.
And they're running black, they're, I mean, they're not wearing fluorescent orange attire.
Oh, no.
They're all in-
The black hoods, the hoods, the black hair.
I mean, somebody's gonna run into the wrong yard at the wrong time, and someone's gonna be outside, it's not gonna be good.
But that is on the list to get those cameras reviewed to determine if they are functional?
I think the park would be, you know, definitely important, because this has been going on for years, so. And then whoever does throws the trash out that way there, they could be made go around do some cleanup, maybe.
It, wholeheartedly agree, but then we also, you have the other side of that, and you have, okay, so someone puts trash in the park. We then have Patrick and Kyle, who typically would just go in, pick it up, get rid of it. Now they're gonna have to go in, review the camera video, determine, you know, then turn it over to the, at what point, I think it's wholeheartedly important to try and bring them to justice if they're doing it. But at what point is it cost-effective to bring your police department, your staff, and everyone in to be able to try and, and, you know?
Well, the problem is, some-
Why can't word of mouth?
You're gonna put the signs up, you know, under video surveillance, so that in itself might be a deterrent to, well, the ones that can read, you know? It'd be a deterrent that, you know?
Yeah.
And as a couple of them get caught, you know, I think, you know, because a couple of them gonna toss it out. I mean, I can't arrest people, but I see people throwing out trash all around town, all the trash that you pick up. I see it all the time, they throw it right out along my fence. You got McDonald's, Burger King, you know, all the, all the Happy Meals. So, I got cameras, I can give you the footage if you want, yeah.
Well, I think the biggest issue here is, is there juveniles, and there's no teeth, the juveniles.
No, these are people driving cars that are throwing trash up on the streets.
We're not talking about the cops, we're talking about the cops. In the park, there's no teeth. You arrest, you go in, you grab a ju, you know, you see it, you grab a juvenile, you, then what are you gonna do with that? You gonna bring it to court? I mean, because the other bigger issue is parental responsibility, and I think that's the biggest issue.
And the problem is, Kevin, it's all fine and good, you catch that kid and say, I think, go to the parents and say, I want them, he needs to come pick up trash.
Well, I think if you call to the parents, and maybe most of them would volunteer and say, hey, go pick the trash up.
I, I disagree with you, they're gonna, they're not.
If I was a kid, that's what it was.
Well, I know, but they're not, they're gonna tell the cop where to go, the parents will, probably.
One of the parents, we call him, yeah, no, quarter of it, I understand, we order him two in the morning.
Yeah.
Say, well, just, he, just send him back to his friends up.
Yeah, and that's when you call digging yourself, because when we were kids, you could not compare the weather.
Hold on, right there.
Yeah.
You don't get that.
It's unfortunate, yeah. What's that, Ron?
Have you fixed the plan? No, the trails, you know, probably written in the paper, the, the trash that they're having in McConia. Our trails are in great shape, the pavilion, and I haven't had any graffiti, no trash to pick up. People are picking up after their dogs.
Yeah.
The bridges have no, no, uh...
Graffiti.
No graffiti on either bridges, people mining it and other people are picking up other people's trash.
Yeah.
So, the trails... Realize this is being blocked, yes. Thanks, Jean.
They're the snow creamers either, Ron.
Yeah, really.
It'll prove you wrong. At least, we have a lot of responsible people in that.
It is, you know, it's so sad because it's that same old thing, one bad apple in the bushel, you know? It, it, it does, and it is sad, you're exactly right, it's...
The good part is, I, I run both the trails and a lot of people are carrying and...
A bad...
And then they, they load the trash up and pick it out with them, so, this is a lot more people than...
We have one gentleman in town, older gentleman with a beard, tall, probably six-two, six-three, and he walk McConia?
Yeah.
All the way down and he's got his bags and he picks up stuff.
From Seabury Road.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, I mean, he's like every...
He goes, he goes the whole length of one-fourth, I've seen him at one-twenty-nine.
I think that pays his property tax a year, he said to me.
The can.
The can, a gibbon, a break.
He went to James County.
He's a great guy.
He walks... But you can look on the bright side, he wasn't one of them.
You're exactly right, unfortunately, alright, alright, do we have anything else?
I have one more statement though, 'cause Jean's post about the vandalism in the park was a very good idea and she said she got a lot of responses, so I propose trying something twice. The next time it happens, that Jean posted again, if you can tag me on it, I can then create a post and say, hey, I got some people that's gonna go down and clean it up. I'll get a couple of people that I know to go with me and see if we can get other people to volunteer to do it. Hey, we're gonna go down and do this, this park is for our kids, everybody wants it, you know, maybe we can get some kind of...
Well, I hadn't, when I got Patrick's message this morning, I just hadn't had time to follow up on it and post it. I know that someone had already beat me too, posting the vandalism that happened last week, the graffiti that was all over the, the equipment at the park. Um, Patrick and his people, you know, cleaned it up again, but, um, you know, it's, it's just sad that, you know, the graffiti was last week, now last night, here we are again with more trash and more vandalism, so it's like...
I have a good idea, maybe you could appoint somebody pack patrol, you know, get some old guy that's retired, but, you know?
Are you interested?
Here we go. If you're gonna depopize, we'll do it, Jean, you vandalize, you go. I guess we'll leave on a high note.
We're always looking for volunteers, Kevin.
Do I get a vehicle?
You know what, you are, it's gonna have two wheels and a handlebars, we get some of them.
I've got some of them.
I was gonna say, I think we have a couple bicycles at the police department.
All I need to do is get a light for my scooter, how's that? Night, I'm asking now, even better, I'll save you money. Big you go.
No other business? I guess, this meeting is adjourned, we're going into non-public.
Yes, I'm gonna go shut the other...
Any, any help with advertising, if they...
He's literally walking from down here. Probably some...
Really?
We assume that this is a call made at six thirty.
That's all, if that's, that's what it has, I don't think they had triaxes back with me.
He's got a great hoodie.
He didn't, Cameron didn't know what I had.
I'm not sure.
Be great, Jean.
I've seen him before.